Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Temple ISD Board of Trustees, held here on February 13th, 2023, beginning at 6:00 PM. Our first item is to declare a quorum, which we do have. Our second item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everybody please stand and face the American flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to these Texas, one state under God, one unit invisible.
Item three is the public forum. Marilyn, has anybody signed up tonight? Okay. Item four is student recognitions. Would members, would we please come and stand in front of the podium, please? Item A is recognition of Temple High School Cheerleaders. Mrs. Parks.
At this time, can we please have the cheerleaders and Coach Edwards come to the front? And if we can, we're members, I'll pass this out to them. Well, they're going to stand in the front. You'll just hand it to them once they get all placed. We are so excited to welcome some faces that probably look familiar but are often in the backdrop, in the background, supporting lots of other programs and lots of other students and lots of other staff. But for those of you who know anything about cheer, it is definitely not for the faint of heart. Hours and hours of preparation goes in, not only to their routines and their cheers, but just the things that they do to help support the athletes at the different events that they attend, and even those that they don't attend, because sometimes they can't be everywhere at once. So they still support all of our athletes, and we are truly so proud of you guys and just, you are, you're our heartbeat, you're our spirit in Temple ISD, and we're so grateful for you. And they actually placed first in the Cheer America Texas State Championship, the Large Varsity Novice Division at competition last month. And so truly, we know how special and wonderful you guys are, but now everybody knows because you're state champs. So congratulations and thank you for all you do. And Coach Edwards, if you want to introduce the girls that are here, you're welcome too.
Okay, so of course I can't have everyone here. I'm blessed to have a squad that does a million other sports and are on a million other teams. So these are the ones I could get with us tonight that competed with us. So I have one of my captains, Anna Sophia Garcia. I have Lucy Lewis, Kiara Jenkins, Shelby Avery, and then my other two captains, like Sienna Fuller and Mary Catherine Norman.
I'll just make a few comments. You know, cheerleaders and athletic trainers, they have something in common. They don't have an off-season, right? Their season is all year long. They're involved in so many other sports, and to think about what they give to so many other people and programs, but then to take the time to set aside and train with the people.
Or you can just stand up where you are. We'll hold them. No worries. Yes.
Congratulations, guys. Thank y'all for being here, and congratulations, 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 congratulations.
Item D is the recognition of Temple High School's Future Business Leadership Association State Qualifier.
Mr. DeValle and your students, if y'all want to come forward. Texas Future Business Leaders of America is the premier organization for students preparing for careers in business and the largest student business organization in the world, with a quarter of a million members worldwide. FBLA prepares students for real-world professional experiences and 21st century technologies and skills, and they're propelled towards their future. Students are empowered to follow their dreams, and FBLA aims to prepare students of all levels for their futures, whether they choose a career in anything from business to teaching. This year, thanks to the support of teacher Adam DeValle, THS started an FBLA chapter and competed at the regional competition last month for the first time. But true to our competitive wildcat nature, we had eight students qualify to compete out of regionals at the state leadership conference in March. So we have our students with us today. We have Edgar Saldivar, who placed third in accounting, one Roosevelt Zungia, business calculations, fourth place. If you're here, just kind of do like a quick little wave. Rodolfo, I don't see Rodolfo. He placed in cybersecurity. McKenna with political science, I'm sorry, yes, political science, second place. Kira's Maturi, first place for publication design. Groshra Mack, job interview. Jamari Thrasher, e-business, second place, and Peyton Molina, business ethics, first place. So, you know, it's one thing to compete, but to compete in a competition that you've never been to before, we've never had Temple High School students at this competition, and to compete at such an amazing rate, and again, eight of you that qualified for state is truly amazing. So we are so very proud of you and wish you the very best next month at state.
Okay, well, this is a pioneer group, and here's what I will say to all of you. There will be many that come after you, that go to state, but you will be the group that did it first. Congratulations, very proud of you. Job well done. And we are hoping to see all of you at nationals, not just, okay? All right, congratulations, and very proud of you, Mr. DeValle, very proud of you. Thank you so much.
And parents, you're welcome to come up and take pictures. Sorry, I forgot.
Make sure your certificates are right side up.
Awesome, 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 awesome. And Ms. Johnson, sorry, sorry.
Item C is the Tasby Business Program Recognition Lostevica Jewelers.
All right, if we can have Johnny come on up. I'm going to give you that, and if you don't mind standing up there with Dr. Ott and Mr. Businesses, organizations, and nonprofits across Texas contribute every day to public schools and their local communities, whether it's sponsoring the baseball team uniforms, donating supplies, internships. School districts rely on our local partnerships and businesses. Today, we're pleased to recognize Lostevica Fine Jewelers through the Tasby Business Recognition Program. And although a fine jewelry store may not be able to provide many in-kind donations or services sadly, but they can and have, huh? Yes, they can and have found ways to support Temple ISD in many ways. Co-owners, who are brothers Billy and Johnny, and their wives have found a lot of other ways to support, from sponsoring different athletic events and fine arts events, to promoting Texas history through the Temple Daily Telegram. It's clear that the Lostevicas value education, and I didn't practice this with my friends across the way, but I think you can help me do this. What would a Friday night radio broadcast be without a Lostevica?
First now.
Yay! I meant to practice that, but y'all did it anyway. Thank you. So truly, on behalf of Temple ISD, we are so grateful to you guys and that you choose to give back and that you choose to support our students, and we are truly, truly grateful for all that you do. And you don't get to go anywhere yet, I'm sorry.
I just want to say, y'all, one of the businesses has been around ever since I came over. What year were you established? Before my time, yeah. In fact, you recently worked on two watches of mine, so I appreciate that. So Geng, thanks for everything you do for the school district and for the community.
Oh, good. It's fine.
Okay. I got one more item here. Item D is alumni spotlight recognition.
So it's always fun when we get to do these in combination, because we do have so many supporters and businesses that support us across the community, but it's also great when they are alumni of ours, and we can highlight them that way as well. And the Lostevica family is definitely not an exception. We have Billy, who's class of 71, Johnny, class of 72, Alfred Jr., older brother, who was 63, and Rebecca Anne, who was the class of 65. And Billy and Johnny also attended Lanier, Jefferson, and Lamar, and later, after graduation, they joined the family business, Lostevica Jewelers, which has served Temple area since 1950, and obviously eventually became co-owners with their wives, Billy's wife Helen and Diane is Johnny's wife. And if you've ever set foot in their store on 31st Street, you know that they treat you like family. They are highly regarded for their honesty, integrity, and quality of their products and workmanship. Billy is certified in jewelry repair, and Johnny is certified in both jewelry and watch repair. And one of the things that they are so well-known for is being able to take the most broken or damaged piece of jewelry that may have sentimental value and just reimagine it into something beautiful and a keepsake that generations to come are able to enjoy. And so Johnny and Billy, by extension, thank you for keeping such a beautiful and specialized craft alive and providing that service to the Temple community. We are truly honored to have you guys in the alumni spotlight.
Thank y'all.
I expect you to be a little busy tomorrow, Valentine's Day. Very good. Again, thanks for everything y'all have done for the community. Yeah. Actually, that's the last. Item five is executive hires, and Dr. Ward and Brandy Stanford. Well, I guess it's just Dr. Ward.
Yes, just me. So at the last board meeting, you approved Ms. Burleson as our new Director of Finance, and so I'm here to just let you see who she is and let her speak to you for just a minute. Okay? So come on up.
Thank you, Donna. The Board of Trustees and Dr. Ott, it is an honor to fill the Director of Finance role here at Temple ISD. It's a great privilege and responsibility, and I look forward to working with the Finance Department and Brandy as we strive to steward the resources and finance of the district wealth. And I wanted to take this time to introduce, tell you a little bit about myself. I grew up in, my dad was in the Navy, and so we moved every three years. I lived in Japan in my middle school years and in Hawaii in my high school years, and so I graduated there and then went straight to Texas A&amp;M University, being, being a child of a University of Texas grad, so that was interesting. I have worked as a CPA in public accounting, and then after that was a law firm controller. We have lived in Sultado for almost 15 years, and I was fortunate to be able to stay home when my kids were younger, so as I say, I used my retirement then. And so, and I have worked at Sultado ISD for the last few years in the classroom, and while I have enjoyed being with the students and will miss the students, I'm excited to use my professional degree again. My family's here today, so I'd like to introduce them to you. My husband Travis, who you want to stand up? Who's also an Aggie grad, we met in college, is the general manager for Black Hill Restoration. My oldest, Lydia, she is a senior at Sultado High School, plays on the Sultado golf team, and will attend Texas A&amp;M in the fall. Fabian is in seventh grade at Sultado Middle School and enjoys playing football. And then Little Travis is in third grade and is interested in basketball, soccer, and video games. We have two cats, a spunky lab mix. Y'all can just go ahead and sit down. They were like, we have to stand up? Yes. We have two cats, a spunky lab mix named Emma, and we love to travel, and I am so excited to grow professionally in this role with a great team on the green side of the building. I want to reiterate, if there's anything that I can help with personally, I would count it as a privilege, and I want to thank you for your vote of confidence.
Thank you for joining us.
I don't have any questions, I'm sorry.
Members, do you have any questions? All right. I know we will in the future. Yeah. We'll save them up.
We'll be there.
Yeah. Item six is the Board Presence Report, A 2022 Annual Tax Reinvestment Zone, the TRZ Report. Mrs. Bren Myers, the Temple City Manager, is going to join us tonight. So thank you, Mrs. Myers, for coming.
Thank you for having me. This is one of my favorite presentations of the year, because I think it's a really great opportunity for me to highlight one of the outstanding ways in which Temple ISD and the city of Temple partner. It's one of many, but it's one of the ones that helps us do so much good here in our community. So it's my privilege to be able to present to you tonight the annual report for the Temple Reinvestment Zone, which, as you well know, Temple ISD is a huge partner and one of the founding entities of the Reinvestment Zone. So what is a Reinvestment Zone? For those in the audience that might not know, the Reinvestment Zone is a physical geographic area of the city that several taxing entities, including the city of Temple and TISD, Bell County, and several more that I'll mention here in a second, have partnered to establish. It allows us to collect the growth in the tax base or the increment in this area and reinvest it back into the geographic boundaries of the Reinvestment Zone to help encourage, to help spur additional economic investment, so capital investment, as well as the creation of jobs. It helps us to invest in infrastructure and quality of life improvements that make our community a place that people love to call home. So I want to have an opportunity to give you a few highlights from this past year. I'll highlight for you the action items that were before the board, and then we'll get into some of the details about the financials, including the source of funds and our use of funds, a little bit about our carryforwards, our bonds, and then a little bit about our investments in infrastructure over the past years. So we, the Reinvestment Zone Board, awarded 17 design and professional services contracts this past year, 16 construction contracts and change orders, and we had five different financing plan or budget, that's the state, what the state calls the budget for the Reinvestment Zone Financing Plan Amendment. So a lot of activity happening this past year. You can see that the construction contracts totaled over $33 million, so we're really in a great position right now of both planning for what's to come next through the award of those design and professional services contracts, but also getting to see the implementation of some of the projects that we've been working on together for quite some time, and we'll talk a little bit about what those are here in a second. So the source of funds, what drives our ability to make investments in the Reinvestment Zone, again, the primary source is the increment from property taxes. The budget for FY '22 was just over 20 million, and we collected very close to budget, a little, just slightly shy of what we were estimating. That makes up the vast majority of the annual budget for the Reinvestment Zone. You can see also that there's some interest income. We were able to secure a grant, and then our licensing fee with Patriot, who runs the short line railroad in the industrial park, that funding also comes into the Reinvestment Zone to be programmed for projects. Again, we have several different taxing entities that partnered to form the Reinvestment Zone and have agreed to contribute their increment for property taxes within the zone into this special fund. Obviously, the Temple ISD is currently and has been historically the largest contributor to the Reinvestment Zone. So again, I think this just really highlights the work and the partnership and the vision that you all have in supporting the growth and development and investment in our community. So TISD represents almost 56% of the total increment into the Reinvestment Zone. The city of Temple is just shy of 20%, Bell County at 11.4%, Temple College at 7.2%, Troy ISD is at 4.6%, Elm Creek Flood Control District at less than, a little less than 0.2%, and Belton ISD at a little less than a percent. So the way that we use these funds is largely in public improvement, so infrastructure investments to continue to see our community grow and our economy grow and create additional investment and jobs. So you can see that we, in 2022, we spent just under 35 million in public improvements. The Reinvestment Zone also supports the Temple Economic Development Corporation through adding additional land resources so that we can continue to recruit companies that come to our community, create jobs, and create capital investment. We also support several other operational efforts, including maintenance of downtown, our Transform Temple program that helps us keep our downtown area really looking good and thriving. There's also grant opportunities that are funded for our local businesses downtown through the Reinvestment Zone as well. So all total, the use of funds came in at just under $53 million for FY 2022. Breaking down the public improvements and specifics of where those were invested, you can see downtown continues to be a huge focus of the Reinvestment Zone with just a little over $14 million invested in downtown improvements this past year. The very building, as you all know, that we're sitting in today, as well as the Santa Fe Plaza that surrounds it, is an example of the type of investments that we have made together in downtown, and has really been a catalyst project for us to see downtown really begin to thrive in the way that it has. We've also partnered through a public-private partnership with the Turner Behringer Group, which, as you all know, is currently underway with the revitalization of the Hawn and the Arcadia and Sears Building. So that project, as well as the public infrastructure around it, is a big part of what makes up that $14 million investment. We've also invested in our outer loop, which we are currently constructing the second northern phase of that project, and we'll be bidding out the third phase that'll make the full connection to I-35 very soon. So that's been a long-term strategic project for the Reinvestment Zone, and one that's really important in creating the type of mobility and transportation infrastructure that helps us attract businesses to our industrial park. We've also made investments in land, as we've mentioned, some rail maintenance, some road maintenance, minor road maintenance dollars. But we've also made some, some investment in some design in Synergy Park, which is our southeast industrial park, and we're seeing more and more investment interests in that area of our community. This past year, we announced an investment by Temple Green Data for a new data center investment in that area. So while we've enjoyed long-term success in our northern industrial park, including this year's very exciting announcement regarding Meta, we're also seeing some really exciting projects looking at synergy. So we're continuing to invest in the water and wastewater infrastructure that's necessary in that park to encourage those investments. So we had a beginning fund balance of a little over 64 million. Again, had $21 million in increment and other income coming in, about $52.6 million in projects going out, so that increased. And then we also issued bonds this year in the amount of 55 million, a little over $55 million. So our ending fund balance is $88,233,419, which is just under $24 million change in We have just a little over $5 million reserve for debt service, so that is what will help us to pay back those bonds that we issued. We have about $75 million in what we call carryforwards, or those projects that were planned, but just a timing issue. We haven't issued the construction contract just yet, and we'll roll over into our current year of 2023. And then we have a fund balance reserved for projects that may come up, needs that may come up of a little over $2 million, and then a total available fund balance of 5.8. That includes the restricted amounts for debt service. Again, the carryforwards are those things that are planned, and just for a timing issue, didn't get, the contract didn't get awarded, or the funds didn't get expended in the current fiscal year, or in the ended fiscal year of '22, so they'll roll into fiscal year 2023. It's not new money, it's just a timing adjustment. We do have an active bond program for the Reinvestment Zone. You can see there the different outstanding bonds that are used to fund the various infrastructure investments and the maturity year there. And then you can see in this last slide before we talk about questions or take your questions, we've made a significant, one of our priorities is to make a significant investment in land so that we have land available to sell to businesses to come in and create jobs and capital investment in our community. We also have quite a few construction projects underway, buildings, and you can see the total capital assets after depreciation for FY 2022 are just shy of 160 million, which is almost a $30 million increase from the prior year. The Reinvestment Zone makes up a significant amount of the total capital improvement program that's managed by the city of Temple. So we have total capital programs underway right now of just under half a billion dollars, and the Reinvestment Zone makes up 31%, almost 32% of that. So again, the importance of the Reinvestment Zone to what we are able to do as a community to prepare for capital investment, for job creation, for a quality of life that attracts people to want to live and work and go to school here in our community. This is just a really important and critical tool, one that most communities don't enjoy, and the strong partnership that we have always had between the city of Temple and TISD is just something I'm really proud of and am really grateful for, your leadership and your vision in continuing that strong partnership. I think with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Members, any questions? I just want to say, in my time, I guess 11 years now on the board, I've never seen this amount of partnership between TISD and the city, and it's, it's the benefit of our kids and of our community. I just appreciate your part in this, in making this happen. Travis Competition Fields, I mean, that's a joint, perfect example of a joint venture that benefits everybody.
It really does.
And thank you very much for working with us on that.
Yes, and that's a, that's a Reinvestment Zone project that you'll see in the 2020 -- Yes, and that's a, that's a reinvestment zone project that you'll see in the 2023 report. Really excited about that. I think that is just going to be something for all of us to be really proud of and to say, you know what, that's, I always say, it's good government when you've got two entities who are not in competition with each other. You are working together to use your resources, the the money that our taxpayers and our property owners and our residents have invested and and allowed us to have a responsibility over. When we use that in collaboration with each other, so they're not, we're not going in two different directions, but we're going together. And I think that the Travis Field is just such a wonderful example of of that type of investment.
Yeah, and 31st Street project.
31st Street, again, Santa Fe Plaza and this building. And then, and I'm so happy that, you know, this particular presentation is focused on the reinvestment zone, but that doesn't represent the extent of our partnership, right? We we partner in many ways. We, I just, I get to to start my day and end my day here in this building. I met this morning with Dr. Ott, and we were talking about the the new elementary school. And what a great partnership that is as well, which is, you know, outside the reinvestment zone, but, you know, our ability to partner to get that done for the community, it's just, it's a great relationship and and we.
With the utilities you brought up there, the roadwork that's going on, they'll be ready by the time we open, August 24th, that's true partnership, work in hand in hand.
Yes, we're excited to to not open an elementary school on an underdeveloped road.
Also, our maintenance and operations centers here too, that's coming in support of town, you know, working with us on that. We appreciate that also.
I think maybe we're talking about some lighting and facade work, yeah.
Yeah, and that's, again, that's just another great example, you know, as we continue to invest and see our our team at our Temple Medical Education District and our downtown and filling in that that middle part where we want to see our community flourish. And y'all are making a significant investment in that corridor. And to be able to come alongside you with just some, you know, some additional things that will enhance that, lighting and sidewalks and landscaping, I think that's another great example of how we put our money together and we get to see a much greater impact than if we were working in silos.
That's true. Well, any further questions for Bren? Thanks again for coming and doing the presentation tonight.
Thank y'all.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item B is consideration for approval of superintendent's yearly appraisal. Members, y'all have seen the appraisal, met with Dr. Ott last Friday and went over it. As per our practice, we do this in public, and I will now read the entire appraisal. December 2021 through December 2022, Temple ISD Superintendent Appraisal, February 13th, 2023. The Temple ISD Board of Trustees Superintendent Appraisal of Dr. Bobby Ott is based on a one-year timeframe from the last appraisal, from December 2021 through December 2022. The format for this review is an overview provided by Dr. Ott to the board members. The items are categorized by five domains: Board and Community Relations, District Management, Student Achievement, Human Resources, and District Communications. Each board member completed a grading process of each domain using a 1 to 5 scale, included their comments and perspective. Domain 1, Board and Community Relations, the average rating was 4.7. And under these, I'll read comments that the members made during the evaluation process. We experienced the disappointment of a failed bond election, worked through an intensive process to determine the desire of the community, and then moved in the right direction to meet the needs of a growing student population while responding to community desires. I very much appreciate his leadership and continued optimism through that difficult time. Dr. Ott is everywhere, the people in our community, the students, and the staff in our schools have come to expect his presence at all TISD functions and also community functions. I believe that partnerships are one of the high points of our district. Dr. Ott has worked tirelessly to engage partners in all areas of TISD with local entities and also state and national programs. This includes partnerships with our legislators. Outstanding community relations have galvanized the community. The reality is that it is about about all children, and they are loved. Domain 2, District Management, average rating 4.7. A on first accountability rating, clean audit, always appreciate transparency in all things, especially budget. Our district earned an A on the first accountability rating, had a satisfactory financial audit, and earned two certificates of excellence in financial reporting. Esther's spending was maximized and in compliance with guidelines. Coming off of another successful bond package, Dr. Ott and staff have done an incredible job keeping projects on time and on budget. Planning for growth has already begun with the latest demographic study leading the way. Always working to become better and stronger, representing our district and community well. Domain 3, Student Achievement, average rating 4.2. Star growth is wonderful. Edwards Academy is performing well. Overall rating of C is not great, but it does not, but it does look like several campuses made great strides. Based on the data, the academic team has put many plans in place to address any deficiencies. Principals and assistant principals have been actively prepared to meet the new accountability system challenges and the star redesign for 2023. Regarding behavior, hard work and consistency is starting to pay it off. I believe Dr. Ott has us on the right track for success in the area of behavior. While DAEP assignments increased, I feel as though students are understanding that TISD means business. TISD does a great job offering opportunities to our students to get them in school. I think our students just face a multitude of difficulties coming to school and being on time. All the challenges that our district has faced have made attendance hard to control and to manage, but our district is continually working to find ways that will get people to understand that their children belong in school. Our students are afforded an excellent education and many incredible opportunities. Our student population, however, comes with unique needs and challenges. I think Dr. Ott is working to bridge these gaps and help each student be successful. He's here for the kids. Domain 4, Human Resources, average rating 4.6. Many different strategies implemented by HR have helped TISD be successful in this area. The principal residency program has been a game changer. Our participation in the principal residency program seems to have to have the biggest benefit to us as far as fostering a strong group of potential campus leaders. To me, nothing beats real-life experience. I'm glad HR plans to pursue this grant again in the future. Regarding diversity, so glad that our district is working to make sure that all have ability to dream and achieve. TISD is very diverse in their employment at all levels and glad to see that steps are taken to encourage and foster diversity. I think this is critical in our district. Regarding teacher retention, the fact that our district started our school year fully staffed says it all. Campus support, administration support, and financial incentives go a long way to retain teachers. Climate surveys seem to be a good measuring tool and indicate good things in TISD. Dr. Ott has supported the stability and diversity of our leadership and staff in a variety of ways, making sure that we fill positions and foster and reward professional growth and achievement. He shows a desire to continue that momentum by giving staff a chance to provide honest feedback on the support they receive. Domain 5, District Communication, average rating 4.9. Staff has been one of the targeted audience for district communication. Keeping them at the front of the list ensures accurate information is distributed. Regarding communicating with staff, timely information sent to staff with pertinent information minimizes the opportunity for the spread of misinformation. Appreciate how staff are recognized in a multitude of ways, builds morale. Truly believe that the majority of our staff believe that they're truly cared for. In many ways, our staff, given of themselves to help out in the community, has helped our district learn to help our own and become stronger for it. Regarding communicating with students, parents, and community, very strong. TISD has regained community trust, the formula works. I think the district does a fine job in of connecting with all groups. I'm especially proud of our relationship with the media outlets that facilitate disbursement, dispersment of our news. Students, parents, and community know that our district is is all in and cares for all of our people. Dr. Ott has been the driving force behind bridging the gap with many people who never thought they'd ever see these days. Regarding marketing, that TISD story is told in a consistent way with many targeted channels, again, the formula works, keep it up. We're really seeing the benefits of making sure that stakeholders hear about the great things happening at TISD. These positive and exceptional exceptional things are nothing new, they just haven't always been brought to the attention of the community. In addition, I love that we show pride, not only in winning a championship or academic awards or certifications, but also qualities such as teamwork, innovation, kindness, ambition, loyalty, determination, et cetera, that are being encouraged at our campuses. This is the domain where Dr. Ott obviously shines above all others. His approach is measured and intentional, and I think it has made a difference for the district. In past annual superintendent reviews, at the completion of the review, it will be recommended by the Temple ISD Board of Trustees to extend Dr. Ott's contract. Members, this does require an action item.
Move for approval.
Motion made by Mr. Gaines.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Gowen. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Does any oppose? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Ott.
I'll just make a few comments. It is a little difficult to sit there and hear that. I was hoping you'd read faster, but I understand. So any evaluation of me is really an evaluation of the school district. And first of all, I just want to thank the board for their vote of confidence and their teamwork and their vision, and grateful that you're extending my contract. I want to thank, I guess, my first-degree-away team, senior leadership team that's sitting over there. Every single domain you talked about touches each and every one of them, and they they are the tip of the spear on a lot of those pieces. But then our entire staff too. I mean, my goodness, our teachers and aides and principals and directors and, I mean, all 1,400 of them, and they're all very important in what they do. I am just so proud of our students and staff, I really am. I mean, they are just doing things that are being recognized, not just here regionally, but across the state. And I think the thing I'm most proud of is the community piece. I I really feel like every single year, we grow closer with the community. And and I think you see that play out in the student opportunities and partnerships and the relationships and just the call, the act, the call to action that the community delivers whenever we knock on their door. They're just truly extraordinary. We're in a special place and doing special things, so I'm just very thankful and grateful to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ott. Item C, future items of discussion. Is there any issues you'd like discussed at a future board meeting? Okay. Item D is important dates, and Dr. Ott.
Okay, these are in, these are in your packet, and I'll run through these pretty quick. First of all, those of you who had the opportunity to attend the renaming of Avenue C to Roscoe C Harrison Way, that was such a special event, and I'm glad that the school district was able to have a part in that. Tomorrow on Valentine's Day, we have Tasty Tuesday at the Career Tech Center, so feel free to join there. The 20th, we have a student holiday, but we also have a school board retreat, and I believe that's C and I and HR on that day. February 21st, Tascatazby Legislative Conference, Ronnie, I think you and Lanell are signed up for that, if I'm not mistaken. And then that same day, I'm actually presenting to the Exchange Club over legislative priorities. And the 22nd is our School Board Policy Committee, 23rd Facilities Committee, and we have a table that's already full at the Founder's Day 2023 banquet, February 24th. And the 28th, we have the Wildcat Workforce Service-Based Learning Showcase. You also have an addendum attached to the dates that has all of our fine arts performances for this month. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Item 7 is consent items, items A through E1. What is the pleasure of the board to deal with these items?
I move that we approve Consent Agenda, Items A through E1 as one motion or as one item.
Motion by Ms. Gowen.
A second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cook. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it. Thank you. Item 8 is action items. If the members don't object, we're going to take it a little out of order, and we're going to go to item C, Facilities and Operations, and Mr. Boyd for the bond update.
Good evening, School Board, Mr. Posey. Good evening, everyone else. Just weird, caught me off guard going out of order, even though I knew it was coming. So, ready to go. Really excited to bring you all some news tonight and some updates on where we are. Those of you that have been in Facility Committee meetings have seen some of this. You all have been aware of of some of these things, but this is an opportunity to share this with the public tonight. We've got some exciting news and some exciting results for our bond and where we're where we're headed. So, all righty. We're going to start it off with our ongoing projects, and and the number one project right now, and a lot of effort certainly, is toward Sampson Howard Elementary School. The, had our kickoff meeting, OAC meeting, which stands for Owner Architect Construction Meeting in January, and we are now meeting every week or two weeks, depending on the week, with Cloud and StanTech onsite, which is fun. It's, means things are happening, things are happening on the work site there. As you all were informed, have also been informed, there will be a groundbreaking ceremony scheduled for March the 7th that I know is in your information, and we'll be making that, getting that word out too, as well, for the public. Very excited about that. The project is on target for completion in July of 2024, so we will be moving forward at that time and moving into the building and should be ready to start school in August. We don't see, in August of '24, we don't see any challenges with that schedule at this point in time. Road and street improvements around the new campus are currently either under construction or in design, and Bren Myers kind of alluded to this a while ago. So wanted to show you all just a few things, and that that may be hard to read, that that little diagram, but there are really four pieces to road improvements that are required to get everything really to where it's, it's able to carry the the traffic flow that New Sampson Howard will will provide. And first is Blackland Road, that's the light green piece, and that is actually almost completed. If you drive out there, it's very far along, and they're still finishing up on some things, but it's, that certainly will be a main thoroughfare thoroughfare to the front door of Sampson Howard. Blackland Road connection with State Highway 95, that's a tech stop project, and that is, does that point? No, I don't know, I was going to point to it, but.
He doesn't love those.
He doesn't love those. Well, yeah, we'll just, we'll go without it. There's a little blue piece there that will attach to Highway 95, and that's tech stop. And when that connects to Blackland, then the next piece is the improvements to Little River Road or Old 95, which will be from Tractor Supply there at the Loop to just south of Blackland Road. So it will be widened and will be in great shape for us to be able to open the school at that time. And then the final piece is the road on the north side of the campus, and that's Barnhart Road from Little River Road down to State Highway 95. That project will be a little behind the other ones, but that's not a critical project to the opening of the campus. That is, that is a road that will not be used very much, if any, for Sampson Howard, but long term, that's important for that entire piece of property that we own for additional expansion of campuses. Touch on the next one, ongoing project, security vestibules. This was one of the first things out of the gate that we began planning because of the importance of that. And so to let you know where we are, materials for KP, Kennedy Powell, Hector P. Garcia, and Ray Allen are all scheduled to be delivered around spring break. During spring break, Cloud Construction will conduct the, construct the temporary partitions at the main entrances of all three campuses, so that when they come back after spring break, they'll have a little different entry point. break, they'll have a little different entry point that'll be temporary for the rest of the school year. But all three will be completed prior to school beginning in August, maybe even the early part of the summer, but right now, that's right on schedule, and we're not anticipating any delays. As you all are aware, we also had enough money in the remaining, in the security vestibule budget, to address Thornton and Jefferson. Those aren't full-blown secured vestibule constructions, because those campuses already have technically a secured vestibule setting, but this allows us to make some enhancements that have been requested by the campus, that it's kind of a plus-one, if you will, to this project, that we're able to address those as well. Girls' soccer practice field, that will be on the spot that where our old administration building used to be, and trees were removed in December in that area. Texas Multi-Chem has the contract for that, that was approved several board meetings back. They will, they're scheduled to mobilize within the next week or so. We were told early of February, and then weather kind of went haywire, and they got behind, but I expect very soon that they will be there. Project will be completed in the early summer, grass should be fully established and ready for use by the beginning of school in August, so it'll be nice to give them a dedicated space to practice. Roofing projects, this is another one of those necessary, not fun, not sexy, but actually that is kind of a pretty picture of a really nice, clean, brand-new roof. And so, Kennedy Powell is complete with a few little punch list items. Hector P. Garcia is underway, and then after that, Ray Allen, Western Hills, Bonham, Lamar, Travis, Temple High, Wheatley, and Freeman Heights will all follow. Some of those campuses are full replacements, many of them are partial replacements. They're campuses where we've been ticking that off as we've gone, and we've taken care of the worst needs, but through the bond proceeds, we're able to get everything, everything in the district knocked out on this, which is very important. It'll be completed sometime during the fall. Travis Field, another exciting project, Travis Competition Field, which is a joint project as well with the city. K P A was awarded that design development contract at the January board meeting. Final design will be completed sometime around August, bidding will follow. You will, you will need to consider guaranteed maximum price for that at that time, sometime in the fall, and then construction is scheduled for completion also in August of two thousand twenty-four, in time for the beginning of that school year, for our Travis students to use. Lot of things coming, coming open in August two thousand twenty-four, that'll be a big month. Here's another one, T H S Auditorium Audio-Visual Improvements, and I appreciate the work that Katrina's done on that as well, helping us to come up with a contract for the design and development of that. Electroacoustics was awarded that contract at the January Facilities Committee meeting. Final design should be completed in May, bidding will commence after that, and then there are some long lead times, and there's obviously during the school year, a lot of stage usage that we've got to work around, so right now, installation's currently scheduled for the summer of two thousand twenty-four. So, we should, again, have something ready before school starts in the fall. Operations Center, this will be downtown, this will be, I say downtown, we're downtown, it'll be a little further south where our current maintenance and operations buildings are. As you all, I don't know how many are aware, I know the board's aware, but for public's sake, these facilities, some of which were, well, some of them were the old, part of it was the old morgue for Scott and White years ago. Some of the other buildings were built in the sixties, and I think the newest one was built maybe in the eighties. Those are the oldest facilities that we have in this school district, and we've waited because we've taken care of academic needs, but first, over the last few bonds, but this was a big piece of our bond, was to improve that for our staff and our people that keep us running down there. That'll house our warehouse and our maintenance, grounds, school nutrition departments, custodial services, the people that literally keep us running, and so, really looking forward to this. Currently working through different plans and options with M R B, local architectural firm, depending on cost estimates and a timeframe for ensuring that we can get it into budget, work could begin in the fall. The project is going to be complicated, and it's going to be completed in phases, so the final phase is scheduled for completion in the fall of twenty-five or in twenty-six. We're not sure yet, because there's still a lot of planning that has to go in place. This will be one of the last projects, along with high school improvements, probably for the bond. Athletic Training Facility, we're about to get to some fun pictures on the next few now. Planning for this project began in the fall with tours to several facilities across the state. We had multiple people from the athletic department that were involved, Ken Wolfe was involved, I was involved. We looked at a lot of facilities with our architectural team, P B K, on this. We've also met several times over the last couple of months with P B K and American Constructors to develop and redevelop, and redevelop some more and refine plans, so what we're getting there, and trying to make sure, you know, it's balancing getting everything that you need, or certainly everything that people want, everything that you need, and to get it within your budget. Right now, assuming lead times don't get, don't get lengthened, and assuming we're able to get everything in budget after our first shot at bidding it, we're expecting to have it completed in the fall of twenty-four. Hopefully, it's early in the fall of twenty-four before the football season starts, but that remains to be seen. So, want to show you real quick floor plan, big pieces to this. This will have, this will have locker rooms for football, for baseball, for track, boys and girls, but really, the most, and it's going to have coaches, obviously, but I think the two hallmarks for this plan, and the things that really were critical and important when we told the community what this would look like in the bond, was weight facility and weight space, weight training space for all of our young athletes, and athletic training space. And when you think athletic training, that's not just taking care of the athletes that get hurt, although that's certainly a big part of it. We have a lot of our kids that participate in the athletic training program that end up becoming athletic trainers, or in some other kind of allied health field as they leave high school and go to the next level. So, it, that is a program that Wendy Skrabonic has really grown over the last few years, and so, we're going to give them a great space to do that, and so, really, really excited what that represents for our, for our kids. Second floor will be much smaller, but we'll have classroom space, we'll have meeting room space, some more offices, a lot of storage, a lot of storage. This building will replace the oldest part of the, of the fieldhouse piece that I believe was built original to the stadium in sixty-five. So, it'll be really nice to get this finalized and get it bid. So, some of the pictures that I think really show you what we're looking at, that is a picture of the option that the board and administration have selected. This would be looking kind of from the, from the high school parking lot, if you will. That would be from midfield, looking straight at it. You see the T scoreboard, that gives you certainly a reference point, if you're familiar with the football field. But again, it's located there, but this is going to serve all of our kids in some form or fashion. This is not a football-only facility by any stretch of the imagination. And then finally, that's what the view would look like from the stadium, if you're up in the stands. So, really excited about what this represents, really excited about the space, the modern nature of it, and the fact that it's going to meet a lot of needs for a lot of kids. So, excited about that. Bonham Middle School, next one, got a few pictures with this, too. StanTech's been working on plans, they're architect for this project, been working on this for several months. We have gone through the master plan and made sure that we've told them the items that are required and items that were promised during the bond presentations. You know, there's a lot of things that we can add on and some plus ones, again, as we work through projects, but bottom line is, we've got to make sure everything that we promised is what's addressed first, and then we work through those other things if money is available to do that. Campus administration has had a chance to weigh in on that. Hill Wilkinson will be the construction company that will be involved in that. We are still in the early processing stages, so I don't have a timeline that I want to put out there quite yet. We've got some general timelines on the website, but this one, we need a little more time to get it, really get it finalized. Improvements to this building, we will be, the high points, I think, we're going to be adding a new library. This is with the improvements to Lamar and Travis over the last couple of bonds, this is now the, absolutely, Bonham has the smallest library and the smallest dining room kitchen area, very, very small in both cases. So, those are the two big pieces to this, and those are additions. We will also then take the existing library and dining space and rework those and turn those into regular classrooms, expand our science classrooms, we've got improvements to locker rooms, we've got A D A upgrades, sprinkler system upgrades, so we've got a lot of, a lot of things that will be going into this building. A nineteen sixty-five, sixty-six edition, I believe, sixty-seven, sixty-five, about that time. So, let's look at a couple of pictures. The unfortunate thing is, the way the building is set, the addition will have to go on the backside of Bonham, so it won't be as visible on Midway Drive, the main focal point. However, we're going to do some things to the front, too, to kind of improve that, but on the backside, for those who will be coming around the back, who will be, who will be in the campus every day for pickup, drop-off, it will represent a significant improvement, not just in the way it works, but its attractiveness as well. So, we'll add on to that back, and again, this is really our last middle school to invest significantly in on improvements, so we're excited to see this. These are just some other renderings of what that back will look like. Again, it will house, that addition will house kitchen and library, that would be the entrances, you come in that back way where students will come in, you see your cafeteria. You've seen one cafeteria, you've kind of seen them all, but it'll be nice, big, new, spacious, and kitchen will be state-of-the-art, and then the new library, which also will be a significant, significant upgrade for our students at Bonham. Finally, and really excited to have some guests with us tonight that had a big impact in this. Vanessa Payne is one of our employees, but is also a parent, and she and her husband Andrew are here tonight with their family, and they brought, they brought their family with them, and I don't know all of your names, but I know Joseph's name, and he's the one that, appreciate him being here, because he gets to see some of the improvements that we're making. And Dr. Ott, and I've talked about this a lot, we've talked about this with you all in Facility Committee meetings, but for the public, I think what struck us as well, let me take a step back, we allocated two point nine million dollars in the bond to improvements for playgrounds across the board at elementaries and so forth. We were very, very far behind in many respects, and that was an important piece of the bond and something that we got a lot of positive feedback on. After the bond passed, we began to meet with parents, administrators, special ed department, and we wanted to make sure that we spent the money well and allocated it well amongst the campuses. And I think something that we learned very much through this process is, you can have a playground that is A D A compliant, because everything you build today has to be A D A compliant, but it can be A D A compliant, but not really inclusive, and not really usable for all kids. And I'm going to tell you, Vanessa was really the catalyst, I think, for a group that came and visited with us and helped us to understand the needs that a lot of our kids face that we might not be aware of, or we might think, hey, if something's A D A compliant, it's good. Well, it may meet the letter of the law, but it may not be as useful for all students. So, we really have worked on this for several months and had some great meetings, and came up with a plan that's going to include new equipment as well, to include shade structures, inclusive elements, improved surfacing, we're going to get rid of that pea gravel, for those of you that know what that's like on most of our, in many of our fall zones around our equipment, we're going to get rid of that. And so, Vanessa and the others looked at some of our plans that we came up with to make sure the items we were, we were including in this, in this package were going to be relevant and helpful. And so, I want to touch on a few of these. By the way, we've, this was approved the other day, so we've already got purchase orders out there. Again, you know, there's lead times on everything, and right now, the lead time says about twenty weeks, so we're hoping to get this in about July, but they still believe they can get it finished if weather, if weather cooperates before school starts, if not, it'll be shortly after school starts in the fall. So, a lot of work's going to go on, and I want to just show a few pictures. I won't talk through every single one individually, but a couple that I think are representative of some of the things that we'll have. You notice Scott Elementary, for example, it'll have disc and belt swings that are more inclusive in nature than some of the other things that we have. It will have large structures, climbing apparatus, so forth, it'll have different things, shade structures will be an important part of it. I think the important part, too, is to mention, some of these campuses have lots of playgrounds. We're going to take out equipment that doesn't, that isn't appropriate anymore. Some of it is fine equipment, but we're going to change those fall zones and make them safer and improve that, and then some places, there will be new equipment added. So, all these campuses will get at least something new, and then we'll have shade structures. So, they're all a little different, because the needs were different between campuses, but principals weighed in on this as well, so they had a chance to look at this and ask for certain things. But Scott has a lot, and I think some of the other points, you see the disc swing, the A D A swing, the music instruments, there are a lot of these items that, again, these are the inclusive items that we were excited to learn about and excited to include in this, once we, we understand, once we understood what really was important. But a lot of stuff you see there at Scott, and that's just some examples of Scott, some of these things you'll see over and over. Western Hills, where Joseph is, I think some things that are really cool there, well, there's a terrain issue out the back with the way Western Hills is built, that's not so cool as it is, but what we're able to do here is, with the consultants, we've developed a switchback, if you will, that will have sidewalks, that will all be compliant with appropriate ramps, and will have different stations with different items to be able to use. We're going to install some basketball goals, soccer goals, and then you see some of the equipment there, that's, a lot of that's the same you'll see through the others, climbing structures, musical instruments, you know, all, all that equipment will be very, very similar between campuses, but really excited about that. So, Western Hills is going to be a big one. I'll kind of hit the rest of these high points on them. Jefferson, Jefferson has our autism program, so we have some items there that really will speak to them. We already have some items there, and you see those on the left, those are already there, we're going to reinstall those within the play area, but a lot of new equipment coming toward Jefferson. Same thing at Hector P. Garcia, not sure what a Gaga pit is, I had it explained to me, I still don't understand, but they're going to get one. So, that was, again, requested by the campus, but again, there's an inclusive merry-go-round along with several other things that you see, again, familiar between all of them. Kennedy Powell, same type thing, they, their play structure, you see the items there, again, looks pretty familiar, the shade structure, and again, notice the colors match the campus pretty well, with the campus colors. Ray Allen has their items, too, as well. So, and there's also musical, there's some musical instruments on that one, too, not just the regular ones, but there's like a xylophone that attaches to the structure itself. And then finally, Meredith Dunbar gets some serious improvement and really some A D A issues there that we, for getting to the playgrounds, so not only in addition to new equipment, but there will be some that will be relocated and repurposed and improved upon as well. So, a lot of things that we'll see there, very exciting stuff for that campus. So, I kind of wrap all that up just to say, and then I'll entertain any questions if you have them. Really excited about, about where we are at this stage of the game, really grateful to the community for their support on this bond. This is what it does, and this is where it touches employees and kids, and it matters, and it makes a difference, and, you know, safety, new facilities, renovation of facilities, playground equipment, athletic equipment, fine arts equipment, it's all important, and it's all part of what we do. And so, again, always, always appreciative of the passage of that bond and for what that means to us, and what that means to our community, what that means to our kids, and thankful for the input for those parents and staff members that we've had through this process, and we'll keep moving forward and look forward to bringing more updates to you in the future. If y'all have any questions.
Just make a real quick comment before the questions. First of all, when Kent was going through the playground equipment, I do want it to be noted that the equipment that we have added, inclusion means inclusion. It is not just for students of... that we have added, inclusion means inclusion. It is not just for students of special needs. When you talk about disc swings, all students can use that equipment. And that was something that our parent group was very conscientious about when they visited with us. Vanessa, I do want to thank you publicly for being the team captain of the parent group and, and being a voice, not just for Joseph, but for all students. You know, I've talked to many superintendent peers about this process because it really made an impact on me. You know, the, the difference between ADA compliant and inclusion, that is a real difference. You could have pea gravel, and it can be ADA compliant, but if a child does not have a motorized wheelchair, and they're an elementary kid, they can't get across it. And that's real, right? So that is not inclusion. And so it has made us better, has a school system, and it will provide better opportunities for kids. But I truly thank you and, and the other parents that showed up as well, representing all spectrums of, of programming that we have in the school district. And I have passed this process on to many superintendents, and they've been blown away and said, this is what you need to do. If you're doing playgrounds, you need to invite in your parents of all needs, that have children of all needs, and really sit down and listen to why they're driving 50 miles on a weekend to go make sure their kids can go to a playground, even though they're passing several ADA compliant playgrounds on the way. So thank you so much. We are truly grateful for your input, and, and it will make a real difference for kids.
Kent, thank you very much for this presentation.
Thank you.
And it is exciting, especially, you know, with the new school, everything, but the new playground equipment and what we're doing for inclusion, that's, that's huge. And we've, we've come a long ways.
Yeah, but we're going to come a long way in the next 12 months.
Yeah.
It's going to be great.
It's exciting.
And it matters. It matters.
Exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we can go back in order. 8A, Human Resources. Dr. Ward, consideration for approval of the 2023-2024 Temple ISD calendar. And Dr. Ward?
Okay, good evening, school board. Where's, where's Kent? So tonight I'm bringing to you the, the proposed 2023-2024 professional calendar for your approval. Most of the items on here are consistent with what we did last year. I do have a few highlights that I want to just bring to your attention that are changes. So if you look in September, September 29th, one of the things we heard from teachers is that they would like a day in September in the first grading period to get some work done. And so we've made September 29th a campus PD day and a work day, based on their feedback. TEA does allow us to have four extra days in the calendar for professional development for our staff, and they do count those as student attendance days as well. That's something new that we learned. And so typically, we do all of our PD at the beginning before school starts, and then we have minimal PD throughout the year. And so because we can use some of those days, we've opted to put three of those PD days in the calendar. So those are October 30th, January 2nd, and April 26th. And then the other thing I wanted to bring to your attention was May 24th. We typically make that a district PD day, but we've made that a work day since it bumps up to a holiday on the 27th. So, and those are the major changes. The other holidays are around the same time.
All right. Thank you. Is there any questions? This does require approval?
I'll move for approval.
Motion by Mrs. Myers.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Suarez. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the same sign. Ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Item B, Academics. Dr. Adams. B1, Presentation of the 2021-2022 District Annual Report.
Well, hi there, board members. And Dr. Ott, I'm here to present to you the district annual report. I want to keep you to keep in mind that this is a report that was required, but it's actually for last school year's information. And so much of this you have already received or been briefed on, and so we're just, but it is a requirement that we present this information to you in its entirety, once we receive the taper report on student achievement results, even though I presented those to you in August, okay? So what is required of our district annual report is all of the items that are on that screen. And so we'll go through those, as well as we're going to take the opportunity to update you on your House, on our, on the House Bill III goals that you set in August. We'll let you know about your progress. And additionally, we've added to this report, we are required to notify you of how many credit by exam we give to students each school year. And so we're going to provide that update and just try to put it all into one. But please note, this is not just my work, it's the work of my colleagues as well, okay? So as far as our Texas academic performance report, we haven't, we've already shared that data with you. Our accountability rating, as you know, is a C. We have been working very diligently to improve that, but we, and I'm not going to go through the academic results, but you can see those, those are linked into the presentation. Our, we are also required to share with you student performance in, for post-secondary institutions. So a couple of things I want to say about this data, because it's really hard to use. This is the graduation, the class of 2020. So these are the students that graduated when we shut our schools down. It also is the, the graduating class that had to attend remote learning as a, as a freshman, which a lot of our students across the nation struggled with. But additionally, you see that 357 of our graduates are not found in their database. Higher education has not figured out a way to actually tell us where all of our graduates did. We have a lot of students that do go to work, and so it's hard for me to use this data, but I understand that we, we certainly want our students to be successful when they enroll in college. And so I plan to provide some, some plans and some ideas that I have for us moving forward at the board retreat on how we can maybe shore up our students that as they graduate, they're more successful in, in their first year of college, if that's the route they choose for post-secondary success. But just keep in mind, this is two year, this data is two years old. Also additionally, we're required to let you know, as you've already been notified, that the district financial report, so as you heard in November, when you were briefed on the first report, there was no material weaknesses found in the first report. And we had a superior rating for that first report as well. So kudos to the finance department. The district accreditation status has been paused through COVID, and so we were not accredited last year. Every school district across the state was like that. So what we can tell you is we were accredited, accredited the last time we were accredited, and I would assume we would be accredited this school year. They just paused that for the, for the 2021 and the 2122 school year. Additionally, we are required to share with you our report on violent and criminal incidents. And so this is the list of all of the incidences that we monitor for the annual report. I don't share the individual data with you, just because if I, if I shared it, it wouldn't be masked, and that's inappropriate because it's such a small number. So instead, I'll let you know that we did have an incident at the middle school, and then we've had a slight increase of incidences for felony controlled substances. That's connected to vaping, as you're very aware, Texas law requires us to handle vaping that way. But I will say Eric's worked very diligently. We've put vape detectors in our high schools, and so that's why we've had an increase of incidences, because we're catching them when they're doing that, when they're choosing to do that. But he's also, we've, you know, we've, the board, you've been very clear about us taking a no tolerance approach to those things. But most importantly, counseling has really developed a lot of education and support and working with our students to talk about drug addiction and what vaping actually does to your body. And so there's been lots of education for students in that area. So we're really trying to attack it from the detection, but more importantly, on the preventative side, because that's really, has students know more about those things. That makes the greater impact on our students. Next, we, you've already approved these campus performance objectives. I shared these, these are things that you approved in, in August, but I'm required to include them in the district report. And so we have performance objectives for academics, and then Goals Three, Two, Three, and Four are the House Bill III goals that you set for early literacy, early numeracy, and then CCMR performance. And then we have behavioral goals and attendance goals for the district. But I'd really like to talk to you more, and probably what you're more interested in, is House Bill III progress. So House Bill III is the, we have two goals specifically on early literacy, where we set a third grade goal, and then we also have strategy or performance objectives for pre-K, grade kindergarten, first and second. And so if I, if I draw your attention to that MOY data, we're in the middle of the year of tracking our data on our performance. So last year, you set, at the beginning of the year, you set kind of the end of year, where did you want to see us be in, and this specific slide is for third grade reading. And so our end of year target is that at least 39% of our students would hit that meets level, and we're already at 34% in the middle of the year. So we're certainly on track to hit that goal. And so we're excited on the progress we're making in third grade. Then if we look at pre-K, we'll see that our students are at 90% right now, on track to hit that goal. So we're above the end of year target. And so that's exciting. And it's always exciting also to look at those student groups and see students outperforming where they were in the previous year. I'm always excited to see that. Pre-K is doing a phenomenal job of holding really high expectations for all our learners and working through that. In kindergarten, you'll see we're at 41% of our students. At kindergarten has showed phenomenal growth this year in reading. And so they're already well ahead of that end of year target, and I would suspect that will continue to move as we, as we go forward. And then in first grade, we are at 28%, and so certainly on track to hit that target, although I'm, my goal is to exceed that target. And then in second grade, we are at 30%, but are, we're certainly on track, and we have lots of school left to go through. And so I think we're making great progress on our early literacy performance objectives. And I think a lot of that has to do with our implementation of our structured literacy pilot that we've had several visitors to our district to see. In the, in the area of math, if you recall last year, math was an area that was a little, not as, not as a strong outcome. And so we've really put a lot of effort into that. And so in the area of third grade, our end of year target was 32%, and our middle of year, a student achievement shows us at 36%. So third grade has showed phenomenal growth from the beginning of the year to the middle of the year. They were our strongest performing grade level in the middle of the year. So super proud of the work that they've done. And so we'll just continue to work there. In pre-K, we're at 93%, so certainly on track. And kindergarten is right there where they should be. And so we'll just continue to push in that area. First grade math is an area that is of, an area of target for us. And so we've been, we've, Dr. Genowitz and I have talked to every elementary principal about first grade math, and we've got lots of plans in place to support. A lot of these skills that are assessed are taught later in the school year. And so we'll just continue to work and target that. But that's an area of focus for us for the spring. And then in second grade, we're at 28%, so certainly on track to meet that end of year goal by the end of the year of 34%. And then lastly, we don't administer a lot of credit by exams, but when we do, it's typically in the area of languages other than English, what we used to call, when I was in high school, foreign language. And so we administered four, we had four students test in Spanish I and Spanish, Spanish II. And so credit by exam is really like a cleping, you remember that term when you were in school, cleped out of that class? So they take in a, take an assessment, and if they demonstrate mastery of 70 or 80%, it depends if they had instruction before or not, they have to meet a certain threshold by state law, and then, but, but all of those students who took that assessment certainly did well. They were at 81 and 88. So we're required to share that with you as well. Does anybody have any questions about the district annual report?
Members, any questions? All right. Thank you, Dr. Adams.
I need to make a point of clarification real quick, especially since media is here. Can you go all the way back to the slide that has the report on violent and criminal incidents? So make no mistake, that's not a list of things that happened at our schools.
Oh, no, that's correct.
Okay. Though, that is a list that the state monitors of reason codes. So as far as we're concerned, we had, I think it was Code 36, I can't see it from here.
Yes.
Substance violation, which goes to the vape. But all that other stuff you see on there, don't walk away and say, oh my God, that all happened, because that is not true. Okay? So let me just say that right now. Those are, that is a list or a legend that the state uses to monitor incidents. So I just wanted, yes, a state list. So I just want to make that very clear.
I apologize for that miscommunication.
Item two is the public hearing for the 2021-2022 district annual report. At this time, I'm opening the public hearing. Would anybody like to come up and speak about the report? Please come up now. Seeing none, I now close the public hearing. Item three, consideration for approval of the district's 2021-2022 annual report. Members, this requires approval.
I motion.
Motion by Mrs. Cook.
I'll make a second.
Seconded by Ms. Gallant. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign. Ayes have it. It passes. Thank you. Item four is consideration for approval of alternative methods of earning credit, credit by examination.
Ms. Rogers is going to present.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Posey, Dr. Ott, members of the board. It's always a pleasure to have the opportunity to share something with you. And this evening, I'm here to seek your approval for an alternative method for earning credit by examination, which Dr. Adams just finished talking to you about. And so before I get started, I just want to make sure that I give credit to Dr. Karen Morgan and Dr. Sheila Ransburg. They are the two that really brought this idea forward and were advocating for students. And so they're not here tonight, but I want to make sure that you know that they are the ones that receive the credit for what I'm about to share with you. And so we recently reviewed our CBE options for our students, and that is the opportunities that students have to receive accelerated credit for a course without, without having to sit through the course. And through our review and discussions with other districts, we discovered an opportunity, opportunity to offer accelerated credit for students in the area of LOT, which is languages other than English. And so in Temple ISD, we have many district, students in the district who speak multiple languages, and that can vary by student. And so just last week, I learned of a student who came to us from another school district, but before then, they were in Canada, and so they speak French. And that student, who is fairly fluent in French, would still have to come here and take a foreign language or a LOT class to get their LOT credit for graduation. And so with your approval, our updated CBE process would allow us to be able to award LOT credit for qualifying students so that their schedules are freed up to take some more appropriately challenging courses for them. Currently, we use the Texas Tech Assessment, and students take an assessment for, for example, Spanish I or French I. They take a separate test for the Level Two Language. They take a separate test for the Level Three Language, and the same for Level Four. And so what we are proposing and asking for your approval for is for students to be able to take the AVANT Assessment. And this is one assessment that students take that measures their proficiency and then tells us which courses they should receive credit for. And so some other benefits of the AVANT Assessment are that it's aligned to the state TEES, which the Texas Tech Assessment is not. It's just a language exam. It's adaptive, so when students answer a question, the question that follows is based on whether or not they got that answer correct. It includes over 40 languages as opposed to just five languages from Texas Tech. And we get the results in about a week as compared to the three weeks that we wait for Texas Tech Assessment. And so that is what we are proposing. Are there any questions from the board?
Members, you have any questions? This does require approval.
I'll move to approve.
Motion by Mrs. Myers.
I second that motion.
Seconded by Mr. Gaines. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. The ayes have it. The motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Item five, consideration of approval of memorandum of understanding, MOU, with Temple College, Adult Education Literacy Program and TISD.
So a few, I guess about six weeks ago, we were approached, actually- So, a few, I guess about six weeks ago, we were approached, actually, Ms. Nikki Murphy, our principal at Meredith, was approached by Temple College about how we could create a partnership to support our parents of our earliest learners in the area of literacy. And so, we, we met and discussed, and so, the MOU is kind of the product of that conversation. Really, what Temple College wants to do is to really focus on supporting our bilingual parents in the area of gaining skills that would help them to gain employment, but also some support in how to support, help their own children navigate the educational system of a new country, as well as really help to learn, help their children to learn English and support that in, and specifically targeting our three-to-five-year-olds. What did they want from us? That's a great idea. So, what did they want from us? Well, they wanted to partner with us so that we could help with the early literacy. They felt like we were more of an expert in that area, and they were more an expert of educating the adult parents. And so, we formed a partnership, and that's what you see in front of you. Really, Temple College is the, is the heavy lifter of the partnership. Our responsibility in it is that we told them, we would help them recruit a teacher, which we already have. We have a first-grade teacher at Garcia Elementary that was interested in serving this population and working, so while the parents are getting instruction from Temple College, one of our teachers, the goal, if y'all approve this MOU, would be that she would be serving the students at the same time. So, students and parents are learning at the same time, and then sometimes they come together to learn. And then additionally, we would provide them the curriculum. And so, we have a special program that we use to build early literacy. We use it with our summer school students, and so, that's a way for us to, to get in front of those students even earlier than pre-K. And so, we're super excited about that. And so, that would be our responsibility, and so, we'd love to have you consider this for approval.
Any questions? This does require approval. Motion by Ms. Suarez.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cook. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the same side, sign. The ayes have it.
Thank you.
It passes. Thank you. Now, Item D is Finance. I guess no reports tonight. Item E, Student Services, same thing, no report. Item Elf is the Board Committee Report, Facility Committee Update, meeting held Thursday, January 26, 2023, at 4:00 PM. Mr. Gaines.
Thank you, Mr. Posey. The meeting was called to order at 4:01 PM. The committee unanimously approved the purchase of playground equipment of several elementary campuses, which Mr. Boyd went over early in the meeting. The committee unanimously approved a contract with MRB for design and architectural services for the operations center of Western Hills, Wheatley, and Edwards, Edwards Projects. The committee unanimously approved the electroacoustics as designed consultant for audiovisual improvements at Temple High School Auditorium. Mr. Boyd and Mr. Wolf provided updates on several projects, including the track replacement at Wildcat Stadium, Sampson Howard Elementary School, security vestibules, HVAC replacement, roofing replacement, girls' soccer practice fields, Travis competition field, and athletic training facility in Bonham Middle School. The committee discussed three potential property purchases. The administration will keep the committee apprised of, at future meetings for negotiation on any of these to become fruitful. Dr. Ott discussed future calendar considerations with the committee. The meeting was adjourned at 6:14 PM, and our next meeting is February 23rd at 4:00 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Gaines. Item Two is the Policy Committee Update, and the meeting was held Wednesday, January 25th, 2023, at 4:00 PM. The updated TASB guidance related to transgender students was reviewed. No changes were made to the TISD policy. TEA requires that region service centers conduct intruder detection audits for all campuses. The report for the Temple High School audit was reviewed. Several policies were reviewed and were presented at tonight's meetings. The meeting was adjourned at 4:45 PM. The next policy committee meeting is scheduled for February 22nd at 4:00 PM. Item B is Board Policy Review. One, FFEA Legal Counseling and Mental Health Counseling. Two, FFEB Legal Counseling and Mental Health, Mental Health. Three, FFF Legal Student Welfare, Student Safety. Four, FFF Local Student Welfare, Student Safety. Five, FFG Legal Student Welfare, Child Abuse and Neglect. And six, FFG Local Student Welfare, Child Abuse and Neglect. Mr. Hagenberger.
Good evening. Tonight, we have six relatively short policies that we're going to review tonight. The first one is FFEA Legal, dealing with counseling. In Texas, the foundation of counseling programs, they base themselves on the Texas model of comprehensive school counseling programs, and that's developed by the Texas Counseling Association. So, a lot of these things that are in law and that are in local policy are based on that, such as the guidance curriculum, the response services when there's a concern of a, of a student or parent, as well as for higher education and financial aid, talking about, that's the endorsements and the various FASPA and those type things is helped, is, we help students through the counseling department. Then, in FFEB Legal, talking about mental health, one of the requirements of TEA is they are to provide districts with a list of recommended best practices programs and research-based practices, and some of the, the topics for that, that, and some that you'll recognize is intervention and managing emotions, substance abuse, suicide prevention, trauma-informed practices, positive behavior interventions, that, those are from that list developed by TEA. Another thing with this policy, it mentions that, rather interesting, that the student ID cards has to have the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline and Crisis Text Line. Just wanted to mention that and how it might relate to us, is we don't have student IDs anymore. Our students use their phone with Skyward on it, but the bus tags that we have implemented this year, in talking with transportation, they're starting to use those not only for bus, but for library, for the lunchroom, so there's lots of things that are being used with that. And so, as that develops, that might end up being a definition of an ID, and that, then, when that's the case, we'll make sure that that's added on to it. Another piece with Counseling Department is we need to have written consent before we conduct any psychological examinations, and as you read through this policy, a lot of these things, you, things, you hear phrases like licensed and certified physician, psychologist, counselor, and social worker. A lot of that language is different than what you're used to, is because that comes from the Texas Family Code, rather than the Texas Education Code, which is, you're familiar with that language. So, as you read through that, that's part of the reason that it sounds a little different than what we're used to with that. Also, one of the, the things that district employees are not allowed to do is we can't recommend a psychotropic drug, we can't offer any diagnosis, and we can't refuse a student to come, that, come for attendance if they refuse to do that on, on their own. So, regardless of, if that, if that information is given to the parent for, that's appropriate in that situation, in those conversations, there, it's the, the parent's duty and right to have those services provided. The next policy, FFF Legal and Local, this deals with parent notification, and we as a district must contact parents if an educator has abused a student or a minor, or is involved with a, in a relationship. And so, that's a, a requirement. And also, FFG Legal and Local, that's where the sexual abuse, sex trafficking, and other maltreatment of children, that language, this is where it says it has to be in our handbook, which it is, and where in the, in Human Resource Handbook, where it's a duty to report that. If there's a suspected case of child abuse, we as educators are required to report that. One of the things with that duty to report is a professional can't delegate that to someone else. So, even, so if you are aware of that, you have to report it. You can't tell your principal or tell your counselor that it happened. You're still required to report that yourself. And these reports are either made to a law enforcement agency, the state Child Protective Services, or at the local CPS office. Any questions?
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Eric?
All right.
There being no other items on the agenda, we're adjourned tonight.